All right, 6:00 PM. So let's go ahead and get started. Let the record reflect, the Commissioners Wade, Townsend, Quellhorst, and Davies are present. First item is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. Is there anything that the public would like to raise that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no takers, that brings us to item number four, case number REZ 25-13, consideration of amendments to Title 14 zoning related to the city's floodplain management standards.
Thank you. One second. I think you're going to start. Is it? Oopsies. Here?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, yes. Madison Conley, Associate Planner, here to present item four, zoning code amendment, case number REZ 25-0013, consideration of amendments to Title 14 zoning related to the city's floodplain management standards. So the purpose of this zoning code amendment is to have Iowa City remain a participating community in the National Flood Insurance Program in order to receive flood insurance for the community. To maintain eligibility and compliance within this program, Iowa City needs to do two things. One, adopt the new flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study provided by FEMA. And number two, align our local ordinance to the National Flood Insurance Program standards to ensure continued program compliance. The last time these standards were revised was back in 2010, according to ordinance number 10-4414. And the proposed amendments that I bring forth tonight are geared towards Iowa City's floodplain management standards, which is found in Title 14 5J of the zoning code. So before I touch upon the timeline that you see here on the screen, I just want to note that there are some key terms that I've bolded and underlined that I want to discuss. So we'll start with the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. So what does it mean to be a participating community within the NFIP? So the NFIP provides federally backed flood insurance to property owners and businesses. In exchange for flood insurance, participating communities like Iowa City must adopt and enforce minimum floodplain management regulations to reduce flood risk. The NFIP offers coverage for flood damage to homes, belongings, and businesses, and it's managed by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The minimum standards can be found and are defined in the Code of Federal Regulations. Additionally, another word that I will be using quite often is flood insurance rate map, known as FIRM. So what is a FIRM and what does it mean when it becomes effective? So the FIRM, once effective, is an official and current flood insurance rate map adopted by a community that is used to determine the minimum floodplain management building code and flood insurance requirements under the National Flood Insurance Program. On the physical FIRM, you're able to see the special flood hazard areas. This entails like approximate A zones, shaded X zones, which I will discuss later, but the floodways delineated on it. And flood lenders, as well as certified floodplain managers like myself, utilize this as a tool to determine what structures may or may not be in a special flood hazard area. So it helps determine insurance risk zones, and it provides the official data for flood hazard risk and influences decisions about flood insurance and construction regulations. So now if you take a look at the timeline on the screen, you can see that in May of 1977, Iowa City officially joined the National Flood Insurance Program, which allowed insurance for the community, specifically flood insurance. Around this time, there was the first effective FIRM for the community. That brings us all the way until February 16th of 2007. So this is our current effective flood insurance rate map that we utilize as a city today. In addition, all insurance lenders who are looking at flood insurance utilize this as well. And then in January of 2020, FEMA, as well as the Iowa DNR, who helps put together the information through different types of analyses, they released a preliminary flood insurance rate map. And unfortunately, there was some errors in that map, so that pushed back the timeframe for our community adopting that FIRM as our new effective one. So that brought us to April of 2023. This is when the Iowa DNR and FEMA released the revised preliminary FIRM. So this FIRM went through an appeals period and comment period for about 90 days, and then after that, it was made final. Therefore, June of 2025 this year, FEMA sent the city an official notice that the FIRM and flood insurance study, also known as the FIS, are to become effective December 26th of 2025. So that signals to us as a community that we need to have these FIRMs and materials adopted by that date. So that brings us to the end of the timeline there. Additionally, as a delegated community, Iowa City is responsible for locally enforcing and maintaining floodplain regulations. These proposed changes reflect FEMA and Iowa's DNR's guidance and help ensure Iowa City continues to uphold and exceed minimum NFIP standards. So when I speak about exceeding minimum standards, that brings us to the list that you see on the screen, which is the higher standards. So not only as a community do we enforce the minimums that are set by the National Flood Insurance Program, we have chosen to adopt the higher standards. And why, part of why we have done this is not only to help protect the community from flood risk and hazard, we have also done this because Iowa City is a part of a community rating system program. So a community rating system program is established by FEMA. And basically, it's a voluntary program that rewards communities with discounted flood insurance premiums for implementing floodplain management activities that go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. And like I said, we join this program to receive discounts on our National Flood Insurance Program premiums for residents by implementing advanced floodplain management activities that go above and beyond minimum requirements. So some of these requirements that you can see in our ordinance as of today include elevation and freeboard. So Iowa City as a community requires residential structures to be elevated not at or above the base flood. It strictly has to be one foot above the base flood elevation. That goes above a minimum. The regulation of the 500-year floodplain, also known as the 0.2% annual chance flood hazard area. So we regulate not only to the 100-year, also known as the base flood, also known as the 1% annual chance flood event. We go further and we regulate to the 500-year. Then we have substantial damage and substantial improvement. So any type of new development, I'm sorry, not new development, any type of structure that maybe has been damaged or is going through repairs, there's a certain calculation that myself as a certified floodplain manager utilizes to determine if this structure needs to kick in higher regulatory standards. So for example, Iowa City, if there is a structure that exceeds the cost of the 50% of the market value of the structure, then if it's at like 65%, it would need to come into full compliance with what we have in our floodplain management standards. Additionally, we have also included an original floor area increase by 25%. That's already a higher threshold than the minimums that have been required by the NFIP. Going on, we have protection of critical facilities. This includes hospitals and jails. Iowa City has determined that Class 1 critical facilities are not allowed in flood hazard areas. Then there's enclosure design requirements, such as venting and elevation requirements for enclosures below the base flood elevation. And then lastly, dry floodproofing. So what dry floodproofing is, is having maybe a system in place where you put barriers that protect the structure from water coming in. So Iowa City requires that not only do we have a certification from a professional engineer, we also need to have a plan of action for when the flood actually does happen to make sure there is a safety measure. So those are just some examples of higher standards that we utilize as a regulatory tool that also give us points in the community rating system. So along with the higher standards, we have a summary of the proposed amendments that you can find in Attachment 1 in your packet. So we'll start with definitions. A lot of the definitions in our current ordinance are based on 2010 ordinance language. The proposed amendments help align these terms with FEMA and Iowa DNR terminology and help add and clarify certain terms. Then there's development in floodplain. We have a general development definition with limited examples. What we are proposing is to clarify development activities such as grading, fill utilities, and refine substantial damage and improvement criteria. Then accessory structures. There's not many clear standards on this in the code, in the floodplain section, so we have established criteria for detached structures in flood hazard areas, which includes floodproofing or elevation. Enforcement and violations. The code features general enforcement language, and we are proposing to clarify violation handling per FEMA and local expectations. Then floodway and encroachment, we have a limited no-rise clarity. So a no-rise basically means that you can't have any development in the floodway that would increase the waters above the base flood elevation. So that's already a minimum, but we are also stating that we are going to require, well, we already have been requiring, but we are also putting it in the ordinance that a no-rise analysis and certificate is required from a professional engineer for any development in the floodway. Then elevation standards. We know that residential structures in Iowa City must be one foot above the 0.2% flood hazard area. We are proposing to reaffirm this by clarifying venting, anchoring, and structural compliance for newer improved buildings. And then the permitting process. There is a permitting process that exists, but it does lack detail. The proposal is to formalize documentation such as elevation certificates, cost estimates, and compliance steps. And then lastly, variance criteria. The code we have today references general zoning language, but this proposal adds flood-specific variance criteria and a cleared code reference, so it makes sure everything is consistent. So that brings me to the analysis. So I have talked that Iowa City exceeds the minimum NFIP standards, and we are a part of the community rating system. So the community rating system has a total of 10 classes that communities can fall into. And these are based off a point scale, and each class is determined by the amount of points a community receives as credit for floodplain management activities. There are four activity categories, such as public information, mapping and regulations, flood damage reduction, warning, and warning and response. The higher standards that we as a community continue to enforce allow our community to maintain a Class 6 ranking in the program, which provides our community members with a 20% discount on flood insurance. At Class Level 10, you do not receive any discount. You are just a participant in the CRS community rating system program. And at Class 1, which is the most stringent class, you receive a 45% discount. Additionally, the proposed amendments that I talked about in the slide earlier reflect collaboration between Iowa City as a delegated community and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, which is the state agency who is responsible for reporting to FEMA that us as a delegated community is in compliance with the minimum requirements established by NFIP. And overall, the adoption of the new flood insurance rate maps, the flood insurance study, and the proposed amendments will ensure that Iowa City continues to remain a participating community that is eligible for flood insurance within the National Flood Insurance Program. Staff recommends that Title 14 zoning be amended as illustrated in Attachment 1 to update requirements related to floodplain management standards for Iowa City residents and businesses to have continued eligibility to obtain insurance and participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Lastly, that brings us to next steps. So upon recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing will be scheduled for consideration by the city council. The anticipated timeline includes September 16th, where council will set a public hearing, and then October 7th, where council has the public hearing and there is a first consideration. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for an interesting presentation. I didn't know anything about floodplain management standards, so very educational. It was interesting to read your report and hear your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. So one with regard to the amendments that you're proposing, can you help me understand? So are you saying that those are not necessary to meet the minimum federal standard, but the amendments are being proposed to essentially like improve or maintain the city's classification and reduce flood insurance premiums?
That's a good question. So actually, the amendments that are being proposed are actually things that the community is already doing. We just don't have them written in our ordinance. So the Iowa DNR, they have come to us and said FEMA requires you as a city to have this language written in your ordinance, and you don't have it currently. So we are not utilizing the proposed amendments to move up on a class. We're utilizing it to make sure that our ordinance meets the minimum requirements established by the NFIP.
Got it. And when you say that we're already doing this, like is it just sort of like de facto practice?
Yeah, so as a participating community, we, there's best practices, and as a community, these things are already being done and have been done for a while. It's just when the Iowa DNR comes for like a community assistance visit, they have to check our ordinance and see if it's up to date with the language that FEMA is looking for. So a lot of that language that FEMA wants has been included in here and has been discussed with staff to make sure that it's what our community wants as well.
Got it. So is it like essentially a circumstance where the regulations are a little bit ambiguous, and we have a practice of how we apply and interpret them to your proposing amendments, to just bring it in line with current practice?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. Anybody else on the commission have questions for staff?
I have a question. The 0.2%, but that's not FEMA regulated, right?
Nope, that's a higher standard. So the 0.2% special, or I'm sorry, it's not special. The 0.2% flood hazard area is shown on the flood insurance rate map, but it is not regulated as a requirement for cities to regulate to by the NFIP as a minimum. So this is something that the city has chosen to go higher on and regulate to, in addition to the 1%.
So the 0.2%, so they need to be, bring grade one foot above that?
Yep. So if, for example, if there's a new home that wants to be built and the property is located in the 0.2% flood hazard area, this is saying that the lowest floor will need to be built one foot above whatever the 0.2% elevation is at that location.
So I took a look at the latest maps, and so I'm not going to pick on any houses. I'll use this building as an example.
Sure.
So this building seems to fall in that 0.2%. So if there was any kind of floor expansion or something like that, then would that trigger a requirement that it would have to be built at that one foot above grade?
That's a good, yes, that's a good question. So I've run into this case many times, and the way that any type of compliance is triggered is if it qualifies as a substantial improvement. So if they're doing an addition, if that addition, the cost of that project goes above the market value, 50% above the market value of the structure, then that's when the higher regulations kick in, and the full structure, including the addition, need to be brought into compliance.
So the full structure is not existing?
Yes. Yeah, so like if the existing structure wasn't in compliance and they wanted to add an addition, if the cost of that addition exceeded our threshold, then the whole structure needs to be elevated above, one foot above the 0.2%.
Is that how it's currently being regulated in the city as well?
Yes.
So looking at like the Ralston Creek area, it seems like most of that area is falls within that regulation. So Iowa Avenue, for example, all of those properties would be kind of impacted where if they, if they made an improvement, or if there was a turnover in housing, that essentially the new standard would apply, or what's currently being applied would continue to apply, which is written in the code. Now, does that get the city more base points, and how does that benefit the property owner as well?
That's a good question. So first, I want to be clear and say that with certain additions, they, they may not have to be brought completely into compliance. It just depends where it falls with the cost analysis that we have to do, utilizing a cost estimate sheet. But basically, to answer your question, the city doesn't technically receive extra points for that. It's just a higher level of protection. We generally get points for just having higher thresholds. So for example, the 25% expansion of floor area, that, that's a standard that would give us extra points. But I can understand what you're saying when it might be a disservice, I guess, to the homeowner or property owner who wants to build. However, that's why it's important to make sure that we as a community are making homeowners aware of where they are in the special flood hazard area, or if they are even in one. And we can work with them to make sure, you know, if they do want to do a project, that their project doesn't cross that threshold that kicks in higher standards. So we, there's just a little bit more limitation on what they can and can't do with that structure in a special flood hazard area.
Right. But this would codify kind of administration of such. So essentially, if that floor space or improvement exceeds that threshold, then they'd have to go through boards of appeals?
Sorry, I just want to clarify, that's an existing standard. So this amendment, since 2010, we have required new construction within the 0.2% to be elevated by one foot above that, that elevation. So we have been enforcing that and implementing that and the threshold standard that Madison described since 2010. We're not proposing to change that.
So, so it's been administered that way, just not written in the code?
That is one thing that I think is clear in the code, but there are other things like maybe the certifications or something like that that needs to be clarified. Yes, so the substantial improvement part of the code, I believe Ann would agree, is clear. It's just, for example, documentation such as like a cost estimate. We need that in order to determine what the actual amount of the project needs to be. And since it doesn't clearly state that in the previous version, then it's hard to sometimes get the cost estimate. So we're just making sure that, and the Iowa DNR and FEMA are making sure that we as a city and community are receiving the materials we need to accurately utilize our assessment to determine if it is actually a substantial improved structure or not.
And one last question then. Can you walk me through, in the booklet, it referenced commercial is 14 5J 73. I may have missed that. So can you walk me through how commercial is treated differently?
Oh, sure, yeah. So commercial, it's treated differently because technically, we call it like non-residential as well. So residential structures are not allowed to be floodproofed at all. So therefore, commercial has the ability to be floodproofed in a way where it can be dry floodproofed. So that means, for example, there was a Poncharos that was just built, where they used floodproofing measures such as like barriers, and then they also utilized like a tech spray around the bottom, and it went all the way up to the 0.2% special flood hazard area. So they just have a little bit more flexibility to operate in a flood hazard area.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I'll just have to reference the code later. I couldn't find that.
You said 14?
14 5J 73.
73. I don't think we have a 73. Is it seven something?
It's, it's in, referencing 14 5J 7F2.
Oh, non-residential mixed-use buildings. I'm confused, I think. That looks right. Yours is on, yours is printed differently than yours. That's the section. So sorry, sorry, what's your question on that then?
Well, in 14, excuse me, 14 5J 7F2, it references 14 5J 73, but I was unable to locate it in the packet. So I was just trying to see.
Oh, so that is because that is an existing code section that wasn't probably altered. So if you went to online to our Title 14, you could find it. Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Townsend, Commissioner Davies, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I think it's good conversation, and I think it helps kind of our understanding of how development is impacted by some of these rules. Just for clarification, the map is not changing, is that correct?
The map is changing. So that is one of the big parts of this proposed amendment is we have to, as a community, adopt the new to-be-effective flood insurance rate map by December 26, 2025.
Okay. Is it possible to summarize the changes of the map? Like is it?
I actually have an example of what the map looks like, if you would like to see that. So this is a, this is a site provided by FEMA. It's called the MAP Service Center, the National Flood Hazard Layer. So it's, give me one second to share it. It takes me a while to do this part.
The map is essentially promulgated by FEMA though, right?
Yeah, so I can't specifically sum up the changes, but there, you'll see on this map, depending on what area you look at, maybe the floodway has increased in some areas, or it maybe has decreased in others. It kind of just depends on the meandering of the stream and the river. So that also, for some properties, maybe now they don't have a special flood hazard area, or maybe they do. So it just kind of depends what area you look at, but at least from what I've seen to my knowledge, there's no giant crazy change.
Okay.
But.
So you can toggle on between like previous map and, because I've definitely gone on the GIS and looked at the, you know, the map. I think it's a little startling just to see how many properties are in the map, I think particularly on the, on the Ralston Creek.
Yes.
So I just wanted to, you know, most of the properties along the river are kind of expecting to flood and have kind of adapted their development. But I think a lot of the properties on Ralston Creek, such as this one, large swaths of Longfellow and things like that, do you see this come up, you know, in terms of development in those areas?
Yeah, I would say there's a decent portion of my daily job that is dedicated to floodplain development and permitting and making sure things, you know, are substantially improved and following the code. So yeah, I find that we have a lot of development in the floodplain. And for example, to go back to your point, this is an image of our current effective FIRM, which is from 2007. So if you wanted to go ahead and look at the changes, that is accessed in the Flood Map Changes Viewer. And then here is where you can toggle on those certain layers. So for example, if you wanted to see how the special flood hazard areas are changing, you can click Preliminary Changes Since Last, and then you can see that the purple is saying there's a special flood hazard area decrease, the yellow, special flood hazard area increase. And then same, that goes with the striped diagonal lines. Purple means the floodway is decreasing, and then yellow means it's increasing. So.
Would you mind scrolling up just to see Ralston Creek?
Sure.
I'm just mostly concerned with that area and just kind of out of curiosity. So it's generally decreased, it looks like?
Yes, from, yep, it looks like, for example, this area over here. Let me see the preliminary, hold on. It's decreased a little bit right here, but there's still both flood hazards and a floodway.
And in terms of like, you know, residential, I'm just kind of thinking of, you know, a $300,000 house, you know, that wants to put on an addition, you know, of $150,000, or kind of build on an infill lot. Do you see this as kind of a barrier to development in a lot of cases on the residential side?
You know, I at least wouldn't use the word barrier. I would say this is more of a protection measurement, because I mean, if something does happen, we want to make sure that that $300,000 structure and its new stuff is protected. But I find that although it may appear as a barrier, there's certain ways with the cost estimate that can be kind of cut back to make sure that they can get what they want. So meaning, you can even be at 49.9%, and that isn't at 50%. So then those extra regulations wouldn't kick in.
Okay. I guess, and the last question I have is just maybe aren't able I guess, and the last question I have is just maybe you aren't able to answer, but are there steps the city or county can take to kind of change that flood map? Like are there improvements to Ralston Creek, for instance, that would lessen? I've just never seen Ralston Creek flood to the level that it shows on the map, so it's just.
Yeah, and these are, these are predictions based on hydraulic and analysis, so they may not be accurate in some areas, which if there ever is an inaccuracy, the community has the ability to file for a letter of map change, which can remove their structure from, from the area or ask for that area of the map to be revalidated. But there is a hazard mitigation plan that has, I think has recently been released by Johnson County that talks about different ways of flood protection. I'm not sure if there's any ways that the city would, would take steps to reduce the floodway in general. I'm not aware of that, so I'm not sure I can answer that question, but I know that we can be proactive and just try to prevent any damage from occurring if possible.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm going to piggyback off of yours. The 2005 floods and the raising of Dubuque Street, how did that change the maps? Or I'm sure there was some changes after that because that's where the, the big flooding on the thoroughfares happened.
Yeah, yeah. So do you know the exact address? Because I could put.
At Dubuque Street in front of Mayflower. That whole section was flooded before they raised it. I think they raised it five feet if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're correct. Just give me one moment, Anne's helping me.
It's right there.
So it looks like the structure itself does not contain any flood hazard area.
They probably raised it above the flood area.
Yeah, and if you, maybe I would need to do some more digging, but there may be a letter of map amendment that has already been on file and shows that the structure is now out of it. So that might be reflected, but I would probably have to do a little bit more digging to give you that exact answer.
Madison, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So this is Dubuque Street here. This is the existing firm. I don't think, is this showing us that even the existing flood map didn't include Dubuque Street?
The existing, are you speaking?
Like the flood hazard areas didn't?
From 2007?
Yeah.
Well, let's go back and check here and then we can just scroll because.
Because I think in 2008, that there were probably areas that weren't included in a flood hazard area that flooded. So I mean, as Madison mentions, there's only these, the analysis that is done is, is as best as can be done, but there's going to be areas that flood that aren't in a flood hazard area and there may be areas that are in that haven't flooded yet but will in the future.
Yeah, ultimately, this is just expert prediction, right?
And that whole mosquito flats area, are they not able to build on that at all?
The city, the city bought many of the properties in that area. So the ones that the city owns, they will not be built on, but there is still some privately held land.
And cannot be built on because we got federal money to purchase and as part of that, we had to record an agreement that it won't be, right?
I was concerned. Now, for my actual question, under 14-5-J-8 special floodway provisions, I guess my question is under F, where storage of materials and equipment. It says on there, the last sentence, "Storage of other materials may be allowed if readily removable from the floodway within the time available after flood warning." What does that mean?
So that means if we as a city know that there might be some material, this kind of reminds me at least of like having that safety plan in place. So if we know that there's existing material, but it can be easily removed and if there is enough warning time, then to me, that, that's saying that it can just be removed when the.
Prior to the flooding.
Prior to the flooding, yes.
If we know the flood is coming?
Correct.
Okay. I was just curious how, if there was a plan to make that happen or, I mean, it's nice wording, but if the flood comes all at once, there's no time. Okay.
Can I just ask one final question? Do you have any sense of the extent of federal flood insurance assistance that Iowa City receives?
I do, but I can't relay it off the top of my head. That would probably be better geared for an insurance.
I, I'm just wondering like ballpark, if we're talking about hundreds of thousands, millions, tens of millions, hundreds of millions.
I don't know. That's, that's a good question. I'm not sure how to answer that.
Okay. I, I mean, do you have a sense of whether it's quite significant?
Yeah. Being a part of the NFIP allows us to access certain funding that non-participating communities wouldn't be able to.
And so I, basically what you ask is today is to codify what we're already doing. There's no change in procedure to protect that money that the community receives.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And we're cleaning up our applications.
I got another question, sorry Scott. The no rise, what does that mean? So like if they're in the 2%, they have to be a foot above the plane?
The no rise is strictly for the floodway. So that's saying any type of development that is proposed in the floodway will, cannot cause a rise in the base flood elevation. So meaning if someone wanted to do like a dam improvement or something, we as a city need to have a professional engineer conduct a hydraulic analysis and we need to see that in addition to have a professional engineer sign off on a no-rise certification, also known as an encroachment certification, no encroachment certification, to ensure that there is no rise in the base flood because that's going to cause a lot of issues for all properties that are either downstream. Yeah, because it's going to have ripple effects if it does.
So is that like when they did the berm behind the trailer park down by McColster? Would that, would that have triggered that no rise?
Was the berm in the floodway?
I think roughly, I don't know, Anne, if that.
I'm not familiar with.
I don't, I don't know.
I know it was done kind of as an emergency fix, but.
I imagine that's the intent though. Like if you, if you block off a flood plain, it's just going to move the water elsewhere, move it higher up for everyone else.
Wait, I'm not in the right spot. There's Terry True Blood, right?
Yeah, you're right along with the trail, Lisa.
So the, the stripes here are the floodway.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where exactly the improvements were.
Outside of the, it would have been outside of the flood. The striped area would have been in that blue area.
Yeah, well luckily, any development like dredging, mining, grading, all of that needs to be reviewed if it is occurring in any special flood hazard area. So we have that in place to, you know, make sure that we're catching those projects to make sure that they're following what we have in our ordinance.
I guess I have one other question just while we're on that picture. Can you just briefly summarize like the mobile home?
Sure.
Impacts?
Yep, so the mobile homes actually have a specific section in our code. They are structures that also need to be protected and held to the same standard, one foot above base flood elevation. Yes, one foot above base flood elevation or 0.2% as you can see the orange. And they just need to be anchored. There's a certain amount of provisions that come along with manufactured housing that floodplain administrators need to ensure are checked off before some can come in, if that makes sense.
So like if you wanted to put a new mobile home on a lot in that area, it would have to comply with those requirements, like be anchored down?
Yes.
Or raised above, the lot raised above?
Correct. I, I do know that there is a state preemption specifically for some manufactured housing. I can't reference that off the top of my head right now, but yes.
Okay. But again, like that's not changing here today, right? That's not an issue with what staff's proposing?
Nope. All of what we're proposing is practices that we've already been conducting throughout time and we are just making sure our language is up to date with what FEMA is looking for.
Okay.
So what happens when you find cases like that in Fairfax with all those illegal wells that they found on property?
Well, it would need to go through probably remediation of some extent, seeing if there's permits on file. That's at least how I would go about it. I'm not exactly sure what you're describing.
Yeah, and I guess it sounds like you're describing zoning enforcement issue. They did something illegally. We find out about it. It's, it's a zoning enforcement issue and we call. Sue Dulick.
And actually, before you speak, Sue, that's actually one thing that we do, are, do have in our ordinance. We have linked our municipal infractions section in the violation section. So it brings readers of this floodplain management standards to that area of the code so they understand that here's our city general enforcement's measures that we take.
How would things like that affect our insurance? Would there be a?
It would actually reflect on the entire community as a whole. So it won't, to my knowledge, it won't affect the individual insurance of the property. It depends how far down you are on the line of violation, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, so seeing no further questions for staff, now is the opportunity for the public to comment. If the public has anything that they'd like to contribute to this issue, I see one person that's not a taker and two is not a taker. All right. So that concludes the discussion comment portion of the meeting. Do we have a motion on case number REZ 25-13?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Hold on a second.
Discussion. Commissioner Townsend?
I just think it looks like something that needed to be done. It looks like there's lots of revisions, not just in the policies, but also in the wording. So I think it's always a good thing to revise what you've done previously to make sure that it's correct.
And Commissioner Wade?
I'm glad to see the language align with an administrative aspect of it. As you can probably sense, the 0.2% sometimes gives me a little heartburn because being in town for, coming up on 48 years, a lot of those areas that are within that 0.2% have never experienced a weather event that's caused issues. And so I do know as a property owner or somebody that looks at putting up a building, it does become a cost factor. So that's a future consideration, but based on what's presented today, it makes sense to bring us current.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate your work. I think flood prevention is important and, you know, there's a map that was produced by experts and I don't have any reason to doubt that that map is current and accurate. And I appreciate that you're codifying existing practice in a way that better protects the city and, you know, helps guarantee federal funding in the future.
Commissioner Davies?
No comment.
All right, so we will bring the matter to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes four to zero, which takes us to item number five, pointing and zoning information.
Just a few updates from the city council meeting on Tuesday. The neighborhood open space ordinance was adopted. That was the text amendment that you guys saw a few weeks ago. The rezonings at the former ACT, for the former ACT properties and the former Pearson property, those also were adopted.
Cool. Thank you. Unless there's any further pointing and zoning information, we will move to adjourn, which takes us to item number six. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned.